Seen in a while. Um, we will bang the gavel. And today is May third, two thousand twenty-three at six P M. We are meeting in person at the Pine Grove Community Center. I'm calling this regular session to order. Nancy, could you please do roll call?
Yes, Linda, here, Gary.
Here.
Jenna, here, Brad.
Here.
And Deb.
Thank you, here. Um, we will start with audience participation. Comments must be limited to city topics that are not on this evening's agenda. A topic may not be discussed if the topic record has been closed. We ask that the audience members who wish to speak come to the front microphone right over there, where the podium is, and begin by stating your name and address, and you will have three minutes for that. Was there a sign up sheet, Nancy? Okay.
Um, first we have Deb Tinnan, and then you go to podium. Thank you.
My name is Deb Tinnan. I live on Washington Avenue, Manzanita. But I'm about to read our highlights from a letter from twenty-three voters to the Manzanita community, to our mayor, and to the city council. We are troubled that one man, Randy Kugler, is engaged in, in his own words, a war with the city council and city manager as recently disclosed in public records. We describe this story in the interest of full transparency and in the hope that Mayor Deb Simmons step up and stop this destructive interference in our city's affairs. Mr. Kugler has persistently pushed his personal agenda on the council and city administration because of what he calls inept public officials and uncomplacent citizens. In two thousand eighteen and nineteen, he pestered city staff to advance his budget and sending all proposals. Even now, he continues a harassment of our current city manager. When he came in dead last in his twenty-twenty bid for election to the council, Mr. Kugler set along a new approach that he called the Simmons Project. As part of that project, Mr. Kugler teamed up with Bill Simmons. They chose Bill White dead as someone with the necessary, quote, star power to be the spokesperson for their views. When former Max Mike Scott withdrew from the twenty-twenty-two mayoral race last June, Simmons and Kugler took the opportunity to put Deb forward as a candidate for mayor. After the election, Mr. Kugler, calling himself a trusted advisor, began coaching Ms. Simpson, Ms. Simmons for the role of mayor. In a March ninth email, Mr. Kugler described their campaign of disruption as a war and congratulated the mayor on getting the city manager a mon to say, quote, some dumb things. He urged the mayor to be content with winning what he called skirmishes until they can move on to, quote, a battle here and there. In that same email, he encouraged us by saying, quote, you are getting better with each meeting. We'll do some practice for next month. Did Manzanita voters elect Mr. Kugler as mayor? Or did we elect the Simmons? We do not, do not object to the mayor seeking advice from a trusted advisor. But Mr. Kugler has been obsessive, fall finder for many years. He has consistently shown disdain for any opinions other than his own. We urge you, Mayor Simmons, to sever your relationship with a man who has harassed our city managers and sought to tear the city apart rather than to bring people together as the mayor has said he want. We also urge the city council to support the city's employees and protect them from harassment. We will publish the full text of the letter in local media. Thank you.
All right, next we have Celeste.
Good evening. My name is Celeste Devaney, and I'm pastor since September first of the Nahalem Bay United Methodist Church. My purpose in coming to the council meeting tonight is to introduce myself, but more importantly, to make you aware of what our church is doing for our community, to share our dream of the future with you. And by the way, the address of the church, Front Ten Street in Nahalem. Um, we have a food pantry in the basement of the church. We have fresh canned, frozen, and dried foods, as well as hygiene and cleaning products. We collect, we do collect name, address, phone numbers. Whoever needs food gets it. You don't have to prove need, but we give food guidelines, uh, we give folks guidelines and ask them that they sign off and fall within certain parameters. We have a lot of people who take part in this particular service. We served a hundred and ninety-two individuals in March, total of four hundred and seventy people. When we take in all of their families. We're open sixteen hours a week and multiple hours to accommodate working families. Um, we also have a clothing bank that carries donated food for, donated clothing for both adults and children. The most needed items are warm coats, sweatshirts, and men's jeans. We also have animal haven because so many of our homeless people have pets for companionship and protection. We have boots for our pets, for people who need support for their pets. Um, primarily dogs and cats, but occasionally birds and hamsters. In addition, we have Nahalem senior lunches. We provide lunch for people to dine in-house for community and conversation, or we'll deliver lunch to them, or they can come and pick it up. Currently, we serve around a hundred meals a week. Last month, we served three hundred and eighty-nine. Um, we have a program we call Lunch-a-Lunch, which provides lunches for school kids when school is out. So that the kids that are on three and reduced lunch, this might be their only meal that they get. We provide them meals during school holidays. Um, in addition, we have the child program. You've probably seen the little tags up around just in August and in November. We're collecting school supplies for kids and we're collecting Christmas presents for kids. This might be the only school supplies that they have. And each kid gets a complete outfit too, and a winter coat. So the church is doing all of this. Um, in addition, uh, we meet with CARE up in Tillamook. And we have something that's called Homeless Connect. Once a year, we're doing it in early August this year, where CARE will come down and give health screenings. And we will pass out, I'll finish with, we pass out tents and all kinds of supplies like that um, to the homeless people who show up.
Thank you so much, Celeste.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you for what you do.
I have a Chris Carey, but I don't know if you wanted to speak in audience participation or no?
No, it was for.
Got it. All right. Um, Connie Burton.
Good evening. I'm Connie Burton. I live at four nine three Second Street North. I'm here because I wanted to give an example of the interchange between the mayor and Mr. Kugler. And some of you will probably bother to see what's on the public record with the link that Deb is going to provide. But this is just a little taste. A couple of months ago, on March ninth, Mayor Simmons wrote this email to Randy Kugler. I didn't want the day to get away from me without thanking you for your call into the council meeting last night, which was very helpful. Many folks were listening. Unfortunately, not the ones with the vote. Something we'll have to work on. I think reaching out or to Brad, both you and me, prior to the votes, would be effective, would be an effort well spent. I already have my mind made up on the funding allocations, as you well know. But a single vote, but my single vote feels less alone, dear so many people thought likewise. Also, many thanks for the coaching phone call. You are such a friend. I would certainly feel better if you made it onto the budget committee. Best, Deb. So all that over, read some more of the emails if you're interested, but it's a concern. Thank you.
Mark Huser.
Mark Huster, five eight eight Evo Avenue. And I don't want to take time. I just wanted to add my support to Deb Tinnan's message and hope that we all pay close attentions to it and address problems. Thank you.
We have Zoom, uh, Mr. Doug Sparks. Go ahead.
Thank you. Just checking volume. Can you hear me okay?
It's unused.
But unmute. Okay, go ahead.
Can you hear me okay?
That's my voice.
Just a moment. Technical difficulties. While we're waiting, does it, uh, that's all I had on my list to speak now. Is anybody else? Okay.
Here, says it's working.
Can you hear me okay?
No.
Um, I could read his message if it's okay with him.
Uh, yeah.
He said yes.
Would I be allowed to have, well, the rest of my time then?
Uh, try one more time.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, yay.
My name is Doug Sparks. I live on Washington Avenue and Manzanita. I'm going to provide a second example email that was given to, um, by the city in response to the public records request. This is a follow-up, um, email from Randy Kugler to Mayor Simmons, um, responding to the email that Connie just read. Thanks, Deb. I was cut off last night before I could finish and could not get back on. Talked to two former Jerry supporters after my morning beach run on Lenida, and both said that they were done with him. I will try to reestablish contact with Brad, but he seems to be very much taking cues from Jerry. Gerald thinks that they are both upset with you due to your lack of not reaching out to them, but don't know what that means. You did manage to get Leila to say some dumb things that I will further investigate. Have you found out yet why she has yet to produce the January bills for approval? We may have to be content, content to win more skirmishes like last night before moving up to a battle here and there. As for the war, it looks daunting at this point. You are getting better with each meeting. We'll do some practice for next month. This concludes the email I thought you should hear. Thanks for the time.
Nancy, do we have any other participants?
Um, no, that is it.
Okay.
Um, I, I would like to make a comment. Um, this job on council has not been fun the last few months. It's not an easy job. You do not have an easy job. Um, we thank you for your expertise and your hard work. Uh, as council, our job is to protect the security of the city. Our job is to protect our employees, our staff from harassment and from a hostile work environment. We need to make sure that our staff are able to do their jobs safely. And we need to make sure that city business is able to continue without disruption. Uh, there were concerning, concerning information that was presented tonight. I think as council, we need to investigate and address these concerns, and we need to do so in a timely manner.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Uh, the consent agenda will be done in one vote unless the counselor has any questions or discussion. The vote will approve the minutes from March twenty-seventh work session, April fifth regular session, and both the April twelfth work session and special session. Do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes?
I have one change. Um, April fifth, uh, there's a note about the planning commission term. John Nansen says this term ends, uh, December twenty twenty-four. I believe it is twenty twenty-five. Just point of order, the consent agenda also includes approval of bills and the updated salary resolution.
Right. We don't need to do those separately.
No, you just want to make sure you read them into the record.
Okay, so.
That has been done.
We're looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which includes the replacement of the resolution on the salary schedules for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, the minutes. And, uh, COLA cost of living increase.
Bills for payment.
And the bills.
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Still moved. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, Nancy, would you do roll call, please?
Jerry?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And Linda?
Yes.
Okay, next is the city manager's report. Leila?
Uh, well, city manager's report is busy. Um, we are about to start the budget process. So the first budget meeting will be held at four P M. on Monday, um, May eighth, where I'll read the budget message and introduce the budget proposal for the general fund. Um, and then the second day will be on May ninth, which will include the Water Utility Fund and other funds. Um, and then we have a continuing meeting where we will hold a public hearing on May seventeenth, where the budget committee will, at that time, recommend adoption to the city council, and we will take public comment on state revenue sharing. We have a planning commission meeting that will be held on fifteenth of May. And, uh, court will be held this month. Is that right, Nancy? That's all I have.
On what date?
Uh, court is on Friday.
The seventeenth.
The seventeenth. Seventeenth. And just another shout out to folks for citizen of the month. We're taking, um, nominations until May fifteenth. That's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving along to new business, um, it's a rather long list, but we're starting with, um, uh, Scott and Chris on the recology increase. Um, thank you for being here. Has to do with a council resolution on rate increases.
You guys want me to be in front of Mike or my left?
No, you can do it there.
All right. Thank you. Uh, so my name is Chris Henry, General Manager for Recology of Northern Oregon. That's essentially all of our sites in Oregon except Ashland. So some stuff in Portland, compost facilities, planes, Holmesville, um, collection companies in, uh, uh, Yarmouth County, and then of course, the north side was soon started, like these buildings. Lawrence and Astoria, all of the, uh, Roger. And Scott runs it all. So he's here joining me. I have some prepared statements. I just kind of want to give you guys an update, and then we'll kind of go into the rate requests for our review. All right. Mayor, citizens, council members, thank you for having us here tonight. Um, our coast operations, including all of our services here in Manz, we do Wheeler, Nahalem as well. Uh, so we run out of a satellite site here, so we have, uh, three drivers out. Then I wanted to just make sure you get to their names. We have Carl Peterson, Mark Olson, and Aaron Sutton. Aaron Sutton is our third driver here, which we added this year. So for years, it's just been two guys. And then they've been supported by the crew out of Warranton for some Dropbox services, or if somebody wanted to go on vacation. Uh, but those are your main, main drivers out here. I wanted them to come, but they declined.
Dead man?
I got number. We also have, um, added a and promoted a driver to supervisor Katie Hardisty, uh, cited out of the Warranton office, and she comes out of the safety, uh, S U B I, the Red Sox. She was, she's been driving, uh, major for ten years in the area. We also promoted Jason Demakis from the driver to a lead driver, so we've had some nice movements, uh, internally with folks here. Um, we have struggled with headcount. I will tell you that people are coming back to work. It's nice. Um, we've had to entice them with some higher wages, right? We've had to do some retention work. Um, and you'll see that in our requests. Um, let's see, we just supported the Nahalem River Cleanup, as well as the Mudnick Foundation Golf Tournament, that is a broader reach, but it's a downtown of the golf course, um, or the fundraising was. We did some any kind of service. Uh, let's see. Let's see. So collection in the city continues without significant change. We haven't seen too much in terms of service changes. Um, we do, we were made aware of a change where I think the council required rental homes to attach the cards to the, to their home for service, which was new to us. Is that news to you?
Side yard.
Side yard. So if you have side yard service.
It has to be enclosed, so it's not.
Well, it's not attached. Okay. Um, so that's good. If they have some rate education, I probably have much more already than just going to the side of the house. I'm just worried if we have to unchain, unlock, whatever. Um, those can be a concern. So also on our customer service side, we, we have a call center that's based out of McMinnville. Uh, it is ten C S Rs, as we call them. Uh, and we recently just got to ten. We've been floundering around six and seven, but like we said, we cast a wide net uh, across broader group. We can get people because we're allowing them to work from home as a customer service rep. But, uh, good news here is we have two of those out of the ten are at. And they're at the sites. If people want to, you know, come into the site and pay, that's, that's a long trip. But we do have some folks that represent the coast for us there. Um, let's see. So for the rate review, C P I right now is projected five point five on the western, uh, region, C P I, and then on, uh, the other C P I, I can't remember the name of it. It's a five point one. Uh, our labor is at seventeen percent, our labor costs, uh, year over year due to be fully staffed. So you'll see a jump because we've added heads, which means we have healthcare, our full benefit packages for those drivers. We've had to raise the rate. We did two wage adjustments. We haven't been back in front of councils since beginning of twenty-one, right, when we renewed the agreement? Um, so we haven't seen a rate increase or an opportunity to do a rate increase since that time. So you're also getting, you know, hit with some stuff from a year and a half, two years ago in terms of all, all the things that have happened in the, in the economy. Um, we had to play catch up. And in order for us to attract drivers and retain drivers, we've done two wage adjustments since that time. Uh, and fairly significant. The drivers are happy, and we were able to retain and then attract some fairly new, good drivers. And then we, like I said, we've added a third one here. Okay. Um, that's the biggest bump that you'll see in your rate package for our, our rates that we've provided is labor. And you'll see that transition into our other operational expenses, and most of that is administrative headcount. So that's the customer service reps, uh, that's, uh, our accountants. They have, they have Lulu that's going on staff. It's our government affairs. I don't know if you guys remember Dave Martin, but he's been doing it for.
Oh, yeah.
Years.
Oh, yeah.
Dave is, uh, has moved on and he's working down the coast for Gull disposal. Right in San Antonio. So he's kind of retired into a nice, pretty good job. Uh, but I, you know, I haven't called him a few times to get through this rate.
Yeah.
Uh, there is a good story here. Fuel is down. Last year this time, we're at six bucks. We're just, um, we're around three sixty. negotiated pretty decent rate. It is that olive fuel that we use in Oregon. Uh, we're only using B five, which is, which is essentially decent these days. We, we did move to try to go to R ninety-nine, which is a big jump in terms of, uh, reduction in emissions. Uh, but we weren't able to secure a tank to do that, and we don't have anybody that will wet behind that, which is all into our yard and fill it for us and then drive away with a tanker. But we're still working on it because recology is zero waste, that's part of it. We were paying premium from R ninety-nine even when it got more expensive, and that's just very, uh, that's remarkable. All right. So what does that mean for you in rates? We're coming, uh, we want to maintain operation, uh, our margin per our contract between eight and twelve percent. We're paying ten. We're using the five percent C P I to get us there. It's just going to be, like, nine point five. And that's our ask going into this rate adjustment. I'll give you an example of what that looks like for the rates. So we looked up the most common rate, uh, in Manzanita, and what do you guys think it is? Do you think it's a thirty-two gallon dip or a ninety gallon dip?
Thirty-two.
Ninety.
I would think it would be thirty-two as well, but it's a ninety. That's such a common rate that you have. So there's some words to do in terms.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Um, but, and that's, yeah, that's, that's on curbside. Um, so a curbside rate is forty-two ninety right now, and we're going to forty-five oh five. So that's a two dollar fifty increase, uh, you know, for over the last two years. That's not too bad, actually, considering. Um, I'll give you an example. Cannon Beach for a ninety gallon weekly service is fifty-nine fifty-six. Cannon Beach also has, uh, every other week, curbside recycling. So that's why it's a little more expensive. But, uh, what we tried to do to determine was, is it a like service? Cannon Beach has a lot of side yard services, just like Manzanita, so we try to do apples to apples, but they do have recycling. Every other week. And then, uh, you have eight hundred and thirty-nine customers. Amazing.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. So that's what I have for you, and we're here to answer any questions.
Scott, how, um, often do you typically seek a rate increase?
Uh, I, so Chris, that's Scott.
Oh, sorry, Chris.
So we, we will be doing rate spend around two to the end of our contract to confirm this once a year. And so, uh, January, we'll go back and look back at our finances to see how we do with current rate. And then we put that against what we project C P I's, whether it's B or if there's some funky stuff going on, uh, which with recycling there is. So if you had curbside recycling, I'd probably be asking you for it because on average, it's costing us sixty bucks a ton to, uh, to recycle it. And, uh, you know, it's ninety-eight. We were tired of the hundred and ten for recycling to get those markets or so. They aren't really recovered. I mean, I can't remember the last time we got paid for curbside recycling. So, uh, what we do is we do an evaluation every year, and we have to notify cities by, well, first, if we intend to do a C P I increase or a, a, a rate review, and some states have different languages to what that means. So typically, you'll see us at least once a year coming to you, whether we're asking for a rate increase or not, we're going to report to you how we did, and then we'll say, this will trigger a rate increase if we fall outside of the contractual margins. Uh, so we didn't do it last year because of the agreement that we just signed and said we wouldn't come back. But so you'll probably see us next year if things continue to, to increase in terms of cost.
Chris, can you clarify the rate increase percentage?
Five percent.
Five percent.
Yeah.
I confirm it. Thanks.
Yeah, just, uh, we'll be in front of Wheeler, and we'll be in front of Nahalem. We can send them out. Pretty much the whole coast, um, is where, that's where we're located.
Well, you, you have been, you've worked with us for a long time. Your company has worked with us for a long time. And the relationship with Recology and the city of Manzanita has been really extraordinary. You, uh, you more than most really support recycling, which is a cultural kind of mandate in the city of Manzanita, and you've done a great job. Uh, you also work with the county and support the transfer stations and the recycling. Um, one of the things that, uh, I, I really appreciate is that, uh, that your support of Tillamook County's recycling. Uh, curbside is really easier, but it is not as efficient or effective in terms of recycling. That the separation of goods brings back more, you get more revenue for that. It's a more effective way to recycle, and that's really been the commitment of the city of Manzanita to do. So through Cardam, and then the county has continued that. Uh, and so I, I just want to thank you for the years of service, and Carl Peters is our driver, and he's, he's a, he's awesome, is right.
Great crew down here. It's a really good crew. I, I worked down here fifteen years ago with Waste Management, had it, uh, from the, uh,
Yeah, I remember that. Yeah.
Uh, and, and it was just Troy and I kept, and, uh, and so it's, it's been, um, and then we're great, but as soon as waste by and.
Well, the, the, yeah, and the productivity went up and it was just great. But, uh, there was one, there was a snowstorm and somebody had to take Carl's place. And I have never seen a more confused conservative. We were, we were helping him go. We were, we were helping him go in terms of his pass. So Carl does a great job. So thank you. Thank you for your work. Yeah, right, right.
I would also mention that, I don't know if you're ready, that's a wonderful, um, county land for once. Maybe three is a company that we got without acquisitions. There's no one person in that company that owns any more than one percent. So it's, it's uh, it's, it's, it's been a great place. I just joined here recently, so I love it. I just wanted to tell the story.
Well, you've been wonderful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, both of you. This was a, really a great thing to go through. I mean, it was very complete, easy to understand. The charts were, I mean, it's all right there. So, thank you.
I'm right.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, he was, yeah.
It, it, I appreciate the job.
Certainly.
So the next steps is the resolution?
Yeah, so council making motions for the adopted resolution.
Um, is, are there, um, first, we will discuss this with the council. I will open the floor to public comments. Thank you, Joe, here. The council will have the final conversation before a vote. I remind any speakers that you have five minutes to address agenda items. Is there anyone curious or have comments or questions about Recology? No? Well, you've answered all the questions. That's a good sign. Um, so do I have a motion for the approval of the resolution of the recology rate increases at five percent?
So moved.
So moved.
Happily.
And a second?
A second.
Thank you, Brad. Um, Nancy, would you do roll call please?
Um, yes. Jenna?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, I think you get to go home.
So about artists, they will, anybody needs to recalibrate.
It'd be good.
Thank you.
Uh, consent, that's fairer way.
Uh, the resolution passed, so we're good. We'll send you a coffee.
Thank you so much, yes.
Uh, next up is um, Sarah Absher.
Sarah, I'm. Let me guess on Facebook.
On Facebook, okay. Hi, Sarah. Sarah is the uh, Tillamook County Community Development Director and you're going to take us through Senate Bill four oh six. Is that correct?
Yes, that is. Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
We can now. Uh huh. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, city council members. For the record, my name is Sarah Absher. I'm the director of the Tillamook County Department of Community Development. And first want to thank you for this opportunity to visit with you this evening about Senate Bill four oh six. And Leila, um, I'm gonna, I would love for you, uh, at the end of my um, conversation with the council, if you have anything you would like to add, any specific details of how this will continue to fold into the city of Manzanita, please don't hesitate to speak up. Love to share this opportunity to talk about Senate Bill four oh six with you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Senate Bill four oh six is a uh, housing bill proposal that is being shepherded through this legislative session by Senator Suzanne Weber with Commissioner Scar and myself supporting the bill process. The bill would allow Tillamook County, if passed, an opportunity to collaboratively work with cities and unincorporated communities served by water and sewer to strategically develop housing production strategies to promote middle housing in our cities and communities. Middle housing is housing that includes single family dwellings, duplexes, triplexes, and fourplexes. The bill itself essentially is an amendment to House Bill two thousand and one. And two thousand and one is what contains the um, requirement for cities with populations exceeding ten thousand to require opportunities for middle housing with clear and objective standards in all residential zones. The other important pieces about the bill that we are hoping to take advantage of, should the legislature choose to pass Senate Bill four oh six, is it would give us much needed support from DLCD and others at the state level to develop a housing needs analysis, our housing production strategies, and to provide that technical and financial support and assistance that many small cities and the county need in order to do this important work. The approach that couldn't be taken through Senate Bill four oh six will really give us all an opportunity to look at the Till, at Tillamook County as a whole in an equal and balanced way to ensure that we have the opportunity to offer diverse housing opportunities for people who want to work and live here countywide. So that essentially not one area or one region is carrying the housing needs and trying to address them. We collectively want to address them together. And at this moment, I'd also like to thank Leila because she has been a wonderful resource as we have put this bill together and talked about how it could potentially work throughout Tillamook County. We're very fortunate to have her expertise and experience there in the city. With this balanced approach, what we know is that apartments are not the magic solutions. And in many areas of our county with our smaller cities and unincorporated communities, we're very considerate and mindful of things about infrastructure, capacity, needs, transportation, infrastructure. And the reality is, is that apartments cannot be the solution that will go everywhere throughout our county to address our housing needs. With this middle housing, which is a smaller scale development proposal, it gives us the opportunity to look at housing options proportionately throughout our cities and unincorporated communities. With that, the land use provisions that our cities and unincorporated communities currently hold in place for things like setbacks, height restrictions, and other zoning development standards can continue to apply. So this is where, if this bill passes, one of the first things that we will do is hopefully sit down together, so myself, Leila, other city managers and planners, to start talking about what we want to see where, what development standards are appropriate for communities. And I think it's also important to note that by offering middle housing in each of our residential zones, it doesn't mean that we will automatically see fourplexes popping up everywhere. Land size proportionality, parking, et cetera, will also continue to ultimately determine the density of that middle housing and what's appropriate and able to be developed on a site. The process to date, the Senate has, the Senate Committee on Housing has passed the bill. It is now in the House. There was a hearing a couple of days ago. We are waiting for the House to make a decision on the bill. Hopefully it will pass and move its way onto the floor. Why I'm here today is to visit with you about this bill and hopefully gain your support, some guidance and input as we continue to work on shepherding Senate Bill four oh six through the legislative process. And also to talk more in depth about what Tillamook County can do to partner with the city of Manzanita in all of our collective efforts to bring more opportunities for accessible and affordable housing to our county. Thank you.
Yeah, I would just, thanks, Sarah. Appreciate the summary. And if I'm not mistaken, townhomes and cottage clusters are also included in that mix of housing. So many of you I saw at the town halls that we held last summer. And by and large, one of the most important topics of the city identified was the need for workforce housing. Um, folks have often heard me say there's kind of four ways that municipalities or local jurisdictions can affect housing. Cash, which we don't have. Incentives, which the city council last year passed, a tax abatement program that was set up by the state count, by the county. Um, and I'm grateful to the county for their leadership in that because the city would not have been able to do that on its own. So we passed an affordable housing um, tax abatement program through land, so the disposition of land through joint development where we can leverage our land to create public benefit. So in this case, the creation of affordable housing. And then finally, the biggest sort of tool that we have as a local jurisdiction is our zoning ordinance. House Bill two thousand and one, um, when I was at the city of Milwaukee, I led the implementation of the model. We developed our own model code uh, that looked at both trees and parking. Because there's a lot of trade offs, sort of a Tetris effect. Um, and we developed a code that um, allowed for this housing citywide. So it becomes, um, what it does is it sort of, it really creates an opportunity for multiple housing types. And when we're talking about housing affordability in a community where the average housing price is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And we have a community in which we want to see more families. We want to see people who can afford to move here, young people who are starting out, people who work in our businesses. There is no way that those people can afford to live here, let alone purchase a home. So by diversifying the housing stock, we create opportunity where there currently is none. Um, and the timing of this is actually really good for us because we are about to embark upon for the first time in thirty years, an update of our comprehensive plan. If this bill passes with the state and the governor signs off on it, it opens up resources for us to not only do a housing analysis, but a housing production strategy. Um, I helped implement a housing production strategy in Milwaukee and there is currently, I think, five hundred units of housing under construction or have been constructed since I left. Um, this is the biggest tool that we have to really affect change. And so if we really are serious about workforce housing, amending our zoning code is the way to get there. Um, and we would do that through an inclusive and a collaborative process with the community. So it would be part of our update and my recommendation would be that we would advance goal six of our comprehensive plan to relate to housing and start to have those conversations with community members to talk about um, form and how those spaces would function in our community. Um, so I'm strongly, from a professional standpoint, supportive of it. I believe that what we heard from the community um, identified in the themes that we established last year also support that and um, would really hope that the city council will support Tillamook County in this effort to um, to help.
Thank you, Leila. Oh, sorry. I would, I would also add, you know, if you, if you have not read the bill, um, I can make sure that Leila has copies to share with everyone. But I mean, there, there are, this is a wonderful thing. This could be amazing thing for all of our communities and cities. Um, there is an obligation from the city to where we would, and the county as well, to where we would have to make sure our zoning codes were amended by the end of year twenty twenty four, which essentially gives us a year and a half, eighteen months to do that. So that would be the first phase as part of the commitment. And then the second phase with the development of the housing production strategies and the H and A, we will have additional time to do that. But um, you know, just also want to make sure that, you know, the council understands, you know, what I think Leila and I are both very committed to making sure this gets done. But two, there, there is that commitment from the city in moving forward that, you know, Leila and I are going to get the work done and get it done in the timeframe that the bill's going to require.
Uh, thank you, Sarah. Thank you for joining us tonight. Um, and I can't think, council all has copies of the House bill, right? Is that correct? And, and they could get it maybe on the website if we're interested?
Packet.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so they can just pull it up from there. So Sarah, what are some of the other ways? You mentioned that uh, oh, first of all, I, I, I just can't say enough about the relationship between the cities and the county. What you did, the tax abatement process was just extraordinary because there's no way we could have handled that on our own. And your backup strategy and your, the expansion to, to abating full county tax was, was really important. Um, so that, that consensus and working together is uh, not unusual, but it's, it's really important and we all thank you for that. Because I know you've been a little leader in that and working with Leila has been really important. You mentioned that there were a number of ways. Are there other ways that you're thinking that the city and uh, the county can work together? We talked about the housing plan. We've talked about the zoning. Is that kind of what you're focused on now?
So thank you, councillor. That's a great question and thank you for the kind words. So there's a few things. Uh, you may be aware the county has developed what's called a multifamily housing grant fund. The revenue that supports the housing, the multifamily housing grant fund comes from short term rental. And the money is collected from licensed holders or permit holders within unincorporated Tillamook County. But that money is available for any multifamily housing development project of three units or more, essentially anywhere in the county. And we just completed our first round of grants for that fund. And so the processes, the, the grants are given, the proposals are considered by the housing commission. The housing commission then makes recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners for what grants should be awarded and what the monetary award should be. And I am pleased to share between the operator license fee revenue and um, some ARPA funding, we are in process of awarding three quarters of a million dollars to six workforce housing projects across our county.
And those, thank you.
Those range from Nahalum to Pacific City. So we got a little bit of money. We can keep our short term rental program intact and, you know, um, there's a lot of opinions about short term rentals and second housing and we have found a way to make a meaningful difference in addressing our housing crisis through our short term rental program. There's, um, as you know, we talked about, there's the tax abatement program. I think zoning really is key. The housing commission is working on other opportunities and options for funding sources for housing development. We know it's very expensive to build here. There's limited land opportunity. One of the other incentives is the ability to help either purchase land or look at ways that we could potentially, you know, find funding for either the city or the county or others to purchase land to hold it in a land bank to make sure that that land is reserved for future housing needs. Um, and then some of the other things that we can look at uh, or other incentives would be through like an H and A or other pieces is looking at where we could either trade properties inside and outside urban growth boundaries, how we can meaningfully and effectively extend urban growth boundaries. There's a lot of uh, bills that are also in this session currently that are really proposing greater flexibility to determine how and when urban growth boundaries can be expanded to accommodate more suitable lands for housing development. So there's a lot of production strategies that we can look at. We have a housing commission and others are probably going to be hiring a consultant to help us better vet those housing production strategies as we move forward.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Yeah. Um, Sarah, thank you for the presentation, uh, House Bill or Senate Bill four oh six. I fully support that. Um, Tillamook County just passed an ADU ordinance. So that has, that's, that's done. That's in, it's in writing and done.
It is, thank you. And it goes into effect here in a few weeks.
Okay. Oh, that's exciting. Um, so this new Senate bill, so, so in two thousand and twenty, um, the Planning Commission, we did an initial study on um, ADUs for the city of Manzanita and urban growth boundary. But um, as Sarah mentioned before, we don't have a population over ten thousand, so we couldn't require. Well, we wouldn't, we didn't have to do ADUs in Manzanita. So we were, we, we wrote some code, wrote some ideas down. Um, you can find those notes in the Planning Commission like November two thousand and twenty and then a kind of list of what the discussions were about in March twenty twenty one. Um, now that Tillamook County has an ordinance written, um, I, I have read it. I, I read the proposal. I assume it's very similar. Um, there are a few little differences uh, for what Manzanita had proposed and what Tillamook County is doing. Um, but I, based on um, the vision of Manzanita and goal three and what we've heard from the community, I would love to advance uh, the ADU conversation to take place sooner than later. I would like to fast track that initiative. Um, and I propose that we forward that to Planning Commission. We have quite a new few. But would like to hand that back over to them to take a look. but would like to hand that back over to them to take a look. Uh, it saves us a bunch of time and money that Tillamook County has already drafted or already has an ordinance that we can produce and just filter it in our, our little changes in there. But.
So we would take what Tillamook County has done and just use it for the city of Manzanita?
I think it would be a guideline.
A guideline, okay.
Um, at, at least the verbiage would be a guideline.
Okay.
Uh, the, the, the language. Uh, there are a few things around parking that are different for us. Uh, there were still some, some decisions that need to be made about setbacks and, and like that. Um, and short-term rental use that was different from Manzanita than it was in Tillamook County. Um, but if we have a consensus from council, I hope that we can, we need a resolution, or I hope that we get into consensus and we can kind of hand this back over to the Planning Commission to look at.
So at this point, we actually prevent ADUs, is that right?
We don't allow them.
We don't allow them.
Not allow them. So this would be a pretty big change.
Well, not necessarily. If Senate Bill four oh six passes, they would be required. There's no, and Sarah, correct me if I'm wrong. They no longer require the ten thousand.
The city of, yeah, population.
Yes, they would be.
Okay.
Theoretically required and we would already have it in place and ready to go.
Okay.
Um, Jen, when I heard you talking about this before, there was um, a, a benefit in, in making some sort of restriction that they're used for long-term rentals?
We, in, in the, the Planning Commission, when I was on it, we had a discussion, which is different than Tillamook County, but we said that neither the ADU nor the home, neither could be used as a short-term.
Short-term rental.
The reason for an ADU or the reason for the house or two properties is to um, work first housing, additional community use, not for someone to be able to manage their short-term rental business while living there. That's different than Tillamook County, but um, that's what the Manzanitas proposed.
And I should point out that Tillamook County's ordinance applies to our urban growth boundary.
Okay.
So you've all heard me wax on about annexation. It's important, um, because the county's rules apply, our zoning applies, but um, this ordinance does apply in our UGB, isn't that right, Sarah?
This, thank you, Leila, the short-term rental ordinance does, that is correct.
So there's, it's just something to think about because historically the city council has allowed development in the UGB and not annexed it, which means we have absolutely no control over things like short-term rentals, the ADU ordinances and so forth. And so having some consistency there, um, it's just something to think about as we start to look at.
We did it recently, right?
We just, we did our first annexation and.
And nothing's blown up and everything's fine and.
No, that's all good. And you know, from an urban development standpoint, the whole intent and purpose behind a UGB is annexation. It's to become part of the urban growth area. You're talking to a planner, so I would have never let it happen if I could control it to have development occur in our UGB that doesn't actually become part of the city. Uh, because then it, it really excludes those folks and they're actually supposed to be part and parcel of our community.
But in annexation, they have to bring their roads and their infrastructure up to acquire.
They're undeveloped, yeah.
If undeveloped, yeah. So part, well, so part of it may be having those discussions prior to building in the UGB.
Which is what we did recently on our last application that included development outside of. But I, you know, from a professional standpoint, I would support that next step. I think because the county thinks, we call this like leveraging other governments' work. Um, not necessarily copying it, but they've gone through.
I know, that's what I meant to say, leveraging.
Um, that, that would be, you know, something we can do in pretty short order, but I would like to align it with whatever work we do with respect to the comp plan because I don't want us running two different acts.
Right.
So my recommendation would be to actually fast track the housing chapter of the comp plan and then include it in that, because we need to update the policies, then we update the enabling ordinances.
Okay.
Um, so those are two separate things. And just for folks who don't know, an accessory dwelling unit is like a secondary unit that's completely separate. We talk in acronyms all the time, so why?
So, so if we did that, that would be, we would need to, we've done some groundwork on the comprehensive plan. So that would mean we would need to hire a consultant that would help us through that, which we do not currently have, is that correct?
That's right. And the draft RFP I have, which I will not show anybody who's drafted, um, does include prioritization of the housing.
Okay.
Of the comprehensive plan. And I'm trying to pair it and try to find a consultant or a team that can do both. So that we can do, we can update the policy, which is kind of the overarching, sort of, we want to achieve blah, blah, blah. And then the zoning ordinance is like, the setback will be X, there'll be parking required for this and so forth. And so I think the work that Sarah and her team have done will help, uh, uh, help us do the ADU portion more efficiently, but we should be talking about, I think, in the context, other housing types, particularly if Senate Bill four oh six passes because then we will be required to meet that middle housing code.
That's great.
Yeah. Well, it's, you have the state as the hammer.
It's really great to have a county as a partner. So Sarah, how, what is, what is your view of whether this will pass or not? Has it received pretty positive response?
That's a great question, councillor, thank you for that. So yes, it has. Uh, we've had some major employers write letters, we've had a few citizens write letters. Thousand Friends of Oregon actually testified before the Senate Committee in favor of the Senate Bill, which I think was pretty remarkable. So, uh, no, we were, we've been very pleased to see the support for this. And again, the, you know, the support from city planners and city managers, if we've, you know, talked to them, we meet one, uh, once a month, uh, myself with the city managers and the city planners and we talk about, you know, all of the matters that we're all sharing and, and working through. It's a great collaborative meeting and, and Senate Bill four oh six has been a great discussion amongst us of how we can help each other with the lift of getting the work done if it passes.
That's great.
And, and if I may, I would also add, I can, I'm not sure if this will maybe help everyone to feel a little better about ADUs. So when I was uh, writing the ADU ordinance and taking it through the county process, I wanted to be very sensitive to community concerns about housing stock being overtaken by transient lodging and short-term rentals. So there is the ADU uh, transient lodging prohibition in the ADU ordinance itself that also includes things like bed and breakfasts, right? Because to, to the points that were made, we want this to be for housing for people who want to work and live here. Um, the other piece is that as I'm wrapping up Ordinance eighty-four amendments with the Short-Term Rental Advisory Committee, there's also a prohibition embedded in Ordinance eighty-four that will prohibit an ADU from being a short-term rental. So it's grouped in with RVs, yurts, you know, all those creative things people try to permit as a short-term rental. Um, accessory dwelling units have been included in that prohibition. So that will apply to those properties in your UGB that are under our program.
Exciting, thank you.
I think we'd see permits right away if we pass that.
Um, Leila, I was curious, the three J consultants that were hired um, under their scope of work, one of the things that they do is update comprehensive plans.
Yeah.
So would they be someone that could help us kick this off to get towards the Planning Commission?
Well, that's a great question. So there's a couple of ways we can do it. So three J is our planning consultant, they're sort of our, they're the person that helps run um, applications that come in that go to Planning Commission, so that's their current contract. The scope of work is significant enough, and I'll talk about this when we, when I talk about the budget, that we would need to go through competitive procurement process to hire a consultant to help us do that work. Three J could compete for that.
I see.
Um, so that's why I'm developing the scope of work separate from them. Um, but we would need to go out to a competitive request for proposals process in order to select the team to conduct that work.
Okay, thank you.
And just for clarification, uh, three J replaced Walt, is that correct?
Yes. Okay, so he's headed the process to find a fighter. And the purpose of hiring three J is that, um, so for example, one of the things we'll be doing kind of parallel to the update of the comp plan is the adoption of the Transportation System Plan, which also includes um, revisions to our ordinance related to transportation. So three J is going to help us implement that um, piece of it. But that'll be separate from the comp plan, but we will adopt the TSP as an ancillary document to the comprehensive plan. So that chapter will be done for us. Thank you, ODOT, for the, for the grant to do that work and the two years they spent on it. And then re-enabling ordinances, we're planning to start kicking that work off.
Also, did we get an ODOT grant to do that, is that what?
Yeah, ODOT actually reached out to the cities, this is prior to my arrival to work with, the cities of Wheeler, Nahalem and Manzanita to develop that transportation system.
Recently talking about ODOT grants, I, I just wanted to make sure you were aware of those.
Yeah, they actually reached out to us because um, there's opportunity for, for us there. I'm always searching for cash.
Yeah.
If you have any.
Um, next on the, any other comments or discussion?
Thank you very much, Sarah.
Hi, Sarah. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Take care. And next on the agenda is the memorandum of understanding with the Lower Nahalem Community Trust. And I think Ben is here, do I have the name right?
Yes.
Ben, okay.
Yeah.
The Executive Director of the Lower Nahalem Community Trust. Thank you for coming and sharing your time with us.
Thank you for allowing me. Um, first I've appeared with the council, I've been here about two years and really the uh, thing that just seems to come to a halt, collaboration that is developing, evolving and having been improved for both of us, the city and the trust. Um, you know, I think it's an excellent, excellent example of what our trust does. It's sort of an ideal project. It, um, it's a collaboration between the city and the trust, but also collaboration with neighborhood there. We've, I'm directly familiar with, you know, help out in it. We all help you out in whole area, um, people who are trying to help with it. So it's community, it's trust, it's city. And it gives an opportunity for education and activity. Um, but also it, it's an area where the trust protects Miami. It becomes a buffer between more wildlife and inhabitants. So it gives sort of a safe way for people to lightly interact with wildlife that can thrive there because of the work that we do. So all, all in all, it's a wonderful project for, for everybody. Um, we acquired the property in twenty twelve and then transferred it to the city of Manzanita, a reuse of a public park. You know, it's not a groomed park, it's kind of the fancy green lawns and such. It does have a beautiful moor for um, picnic and, and trails and such and that. I'm curious, I, and all of these, those are the.
Yeah. And we're talking about Elks Meadows.
We're at Elks Meadows Park.
Yeah. Since we acquired it, we've been stewarding and the MOU has to do with that stewardship. And in that, we've removed trash, even last year I was in the wetland part of it, pulled out five or six tires that were hidden way back in there. And so it's been an ongoing effort to, to steward. We've been battling invasive, namely scotch broom and blackberries, um, planting native plants and, and maintaining them and then maintaining the exposure taken from the wildlife food we like to have there. Um, uh, and, but we want to be a part of it through you. We've all developed trails, we can chip every year and um, and keep the invasive species away from what we have built the, uh, we built the um, boardwalk, it goes down people like this well. And then this year we expanded it, uh, because there, it started out, you're having a wetland area located of water in the part of the year. And um, we, we brought more, uh, people into mowing this year. And all of this um, has been primarily trust expense with it. Now, MOU that's been in effect since twenty nineteen, which I believe was eight hundred and fifty in the year.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, eight hundred.
I thought it was a typo.
Yeah. Um, it, uh, that work is done through the commitment of both our wonderful volunteers, who are doing the lion's share of work, but also with our staff. And uh, the staff I want to mention, Shane Chilbren, who is our stewardship lead, and he does a lot of planning for the trips that where he takes volunteers out there and prepping the tools, putting up tools afterwards and so he's doing work at the farm to get ready for it and wants to come back, dealing with, running away the trash and such. Also, we now have Emily Akdenian, who is our outreach and um, education person. She has um, helped organize, for example, this year's birthday event, which happened a couple of weeks ago. And myself, I was out there last year because I love working with students and we had a field trip. And students all the way up from Medford, St. Mary's, you know, we moved a mountain of scotch broom and a couple of them, one after one scotch broom that came out and having been hip deep in the mountains. Um, I didn't see it. Uh, and, and we have been, either us or volunteers have been paying for the mowing. Now, one of the changes that we've uh, come up with in discussing it as the city would start doing the mowing, then we would help monitor and act for mowing. That one of the changes we're advocating for in the new MOU. Um, but uh, before we make that point, um, the birthday ended up being fantastic, you know, we had over thirty people there. We had um, families, we had fam, you know, children and their friends, we had uh, the neighborhoods. We had uh, trail keepers of Oregon that come in. We had some of the original guys who built that boardwalk, they ended up doing the extension of the boardwalk. We um, you know, the city was represented, you know, and your daughter and daughter's friend came. I personally watched some of the, the lion's share of uh, blackberries. And um, but also private individuals, we had a Nike employee there with their spouse who eat one after the blackberries and such. Um, but we want to continue and expand the um, the collaboration. Hopefully, we, now the boardwalk has been extended and um, I think it would be great to have a opening ceremony after seven years to celebrate that, um, and we can discuss that a little bit. The um, last year the city helped by removing some of the invases when we built the piles that came and got them. This year or next year, hopefully we'll start with the mowing and such. But what we looked at was that, that the eight hundred and fifty dollars is probably a little shy of, of the hours and the work that was being done. And, and Leila and I thought maybe we'd take a shot at two thousand dollars to your spenders, that change. There's one change that I'd like to make in the MOU, and that is, I think I included the gravel roadways we would maintain, but gravel is a little bit outside of our family wicks. So I think we're probably let the city take care of the gravel. The, the chip trails and such would still be our, our work and the native plants. So what I'd like to do is if you have questions about what we do or how we do it or anything else, please go ahead.
Um, well, Ben, I was curious, so the two thousand dollars, um, you need gravel and you want the city to do the mowing. Does the two thousand dollars cover that or is the mowing and the gravel in addition to the two thousand dollars?
It would be an addition.
Okay.
And the gravel, there's gravel access roads. And what, what I, the change would be that we would not be stewarding the gravel.
Okay.
And I should maybe clarify if I can, Ben. So since, since Ben and I connected and Shane, um, Dan White, so our public works director, we've sat down a couple of times and what the city has done is we provided wood chips. We actually provided the wood that they needed to do the extension of the boardwalk. So part of my budget proposal includes the increase in the um, funding and that's really to help make, support the organization. Um, they do an incredible amount of work there, it's kind of mind-blowing. Um, so even two thousand dollars feels like a small amount. But what we do in our, our parks budget is we do budget resources for materials and supplies. And so when we can, um, we coordinate with Ben to provide those. Dan and his team have already agreed to conduct the, to do the mowing. Um, and we're now just in much more communication, I think, than probably previously. So um, when there's a need and our staff are able to, um, we go and support that because it is our land. I mean, we own it. And so um, we are responsible for it. And so in coordination with the trust, we're able to, I think, support their efforts um, as much as we can. And so I think this is a good starting point and then we can kind of see what we can see from there. Um, but that coordination is really, I think, key to the relationship and we make it. Because there are things that the city has on hand that we can just provide.
Right.
And it's our land and it's our park. And so it makes complete sense for us to be partnering with them. I just think we didn't have that communication line um, previously. So I've been working closely with Dan, with Shane and then um, with, with, with Ben.
So are you allowed to use CLT money for this?
I don't know about that. Um, certainly we could consider it. Um, yeah, I mean, if we're actually managing trails, trails are approved use that we can. And so we actually have, the budget proposal includes some resources. And so we actually have, the budget proposal includes some resources for contract services. And so, and for materials and services. So we get creative when we need to find the resources, but that's a great point. And we can certainly look at using some of those resources to support.
So Ben, I have one question. I've been out there quite a bit. And one of the things that's great about it is you're usually by yourself. But I kind of wonder how, it's a great spot, but it is in kind of a out of the way spot. Is there anything you feel we should be doing to increase utilization? Or are we happy with the light touch that's getting right now?
There are pretty strong aspects of light touch. But as far as things that I think would benefit both citizens of the city and the usage of the park is just mere involvement. I think people are aware of it because it's so out of the way. And so having an Earth Day event or other, you know, the beginning of this collaboration will bring more people to it. And that, that will allow people to be aware of it being there. And will just gently increase the usage of the park.
The other thing that I've used it to, you know, get from whatever that road is to start walking into the state park. And, you know, I just wonder a little bit about whether or not it would be a good idea to talk about that opportunity or to provide some kind of direction. It's not too hard to figure out, but it is a nice access to that set of trails that are beyond your reach, right?
Yeah, our, our work on the trail starts up the hill then, but we sort of have open some of the fine area and then it appears off and then it ends up in the park. Another area that I saw in an early discussion, readings, some old papers about this whole project. Maybe we may look to some more educational signage. I think that would be beneficial. But also just not to encourage school kids to come out more or families and have maybe an event a year where people are invited to come in. We're trying to, if we have the berms, it's a little bit more attractive.
Parking berm looks awesome now.
And, and part of that, it is a big huge neighbor. There's not a lot of parking around there. So encouraging too much may be problematic. Not too many way, doesn't generate a lot of traffic except for the folks that live there, but it is a city park. And so, and it's a gem. And so it's got that wonderful hilltop and that for picnic game. And I'm hearing more and more people who come through the park and like through their malls and appreciate the access.
I was hoping to leverage the wayfinding that we're going to be doing with TCVA to work with Ben and his team to get signage there too.
Yeah. But you really do want the balance because it initially was meant to be not a pristine park, but a kind of natural park. And you really want to be careful about too much publicity on that. Because it is a gem. It is just wonderful.
Now, another benefit to our growing collaboration is, you know, I have a five inch chipper that maybe didn't have. So we do a morning after a storm to the roar of a chipper, you can think of us.
Well, I know where that wood came from.
I don't, I don't know where we're in the process. Does somebody goes back to something in the budget or?
Well, now I think we have councils willing to make a motion. If there's a motion to support the memorandum of understanding with raise our contributions from eight hundred dollars to two thousand dollars. Do I hear a motion? And thank you. And we need to know gravel.
And number one, are we?
Or can that just be a handshake?
Gravel and mowing.
We had talked about adding an additional provision that would include just additional coordination of the city to provide services and materials on an as needed basis. So I think you could amend the motion to include that.
Okay.
Okay. I'll make sure it's reflected and then you can delegate.
We'll make it the final.
Okay. And Nancy, would you two roll closest?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Hannah.
Yes.
Gary.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
I did. Was there anyone in the audience that before? Me? I don't think you can change their minds. Okay.
I was bracing for that.
Thank you so much, Ben, for the time and for what you do. Okay, we appreciate it. Next up, we have an application for a special event permit. Counselor Mayor Lee will introduce Ms. Lasky to tell us about the Fourth of July Parade.
Absolutely. I think everybody's pretty excited to see the parade come back. Well, I shouldn't say everybody because, but most of us.
There are those two.
Most of us are very excited to see the parade come back. And this year, the, it's a little different because the city is not as involved as we've been in the past. So we have a larger volunteer effort to make it happen. And your effort, I think we all need to always remember that, you know, we haven't done this for three years. A lot of us that are volunteering do it. And so a little patience would go a long ways. I never quite realized what was involved in getting a parade. But anyway, it's been fun. And in our packet today, we have the application for the special event permit. And we have the parade route. And Erin Lasky is going to talk. She's the chairperson of the volunteer parade committee. And she's working with the city and we're trying to get all our Ts crossed and our Is dotted. And so I'm going to let introduce Erin and let her give her a little spiel.
Well, Erin's coming up here. I do want to note, the city last month grouped a contract with TCVA to have Carolyn, our person that runs the visitor's center. One of her job duties is to coordinate with volunteer groups so the city can extend its liability insurance to the volunteers, which is actually a huge barrier for y'all. The city also spent quite a bit of money working with Josh to get a donation site up on visitor's center's website. So I feel like we're always asking for money, but feel free to go on there and donate if you so please. And then when you kind of go through the application, some of the conditions of approval will include coordinating with the police department to make sure that cert folks are, the traffic control plan is approved. And then Public Works will be providing all the barricades and so forth. So I hand it over to you.
Cool. My name's Erin. I guess I'm just going to give a little background. I grew up here, went to the parades every year. I now have three kids. And they've been to a couple of the parades, but since we haven't had them for three years, I think they've kind of forgotten. When they're like, so it's important to me to have this come back. It's just, I have so many memories as we came riding in the fire trucks and all that kind of stuff. I don't even have any. Yeah. So what we've done so far, we've, the website, we're still kind of working on it. There's a little glitch there, but we're working on it. I thank the city for helping with that because I'm sure it does take a lot of resources. So thank you. And the insurance, that was great to get that covered. I've been talking to certs. I'm still kind of waiting for confirmation on that, but I'm sure that that'll be fine. We have, I don't know if anyone's seen any jars around, but we put jars around. We do have to raise a little bit of money for participation ribbons and awards, which actually, Cardiff Cardam has said that they will make the trophies for the.
Great idea.
So they're going to make the awards for best float and best walker, either all the three categories. So I put in a request for a flyover from the Air Force. So I've helped with that, thank you. And I'm pretty sure that's all gone through. The DOD will be, so I think we're good to go on there. We have a new poster that's coming out too. Lori Dillon did the artwork. So it's really, really beautiful. I think I might even have it tomorrow. So very excited. But the parade route, I did hear that I didn't make it the way that it was. So I think we'll keep it this way this year, but I definitely want to look at that if there are some issues with flow. Maybe that's, you know, if it gets kind of congested, maybe we'll go back to the old way of having it go up toward the stream. But this year, we'll keep it simple and just to live around. I think that's it.
Sharon, do you need any help? Do you need more volunteers?
Oh, always. Always more. I need all of the volunteers. Yeah, we have, cert will need a big help if you can find those volunteers. So that'd be huge to just have people on the parade route. We do, there's about nine people on the committee. I mean, that are officially like there every week, super solid group of people. They're so awesome. I'm so thankful to have like a really committed group. But I know that we're going to need probably like nine more for staging and stuff like that. So yes. Anybody that's listening to this and wants to volunteer, well, definitely.
And I think, you know, we, we don't really know what to expect. I mean, we haven't had in three years. In the probably fifteen years that I went to the parade, it started off, you'd show up, you know, fifteen minutes before it started. And then things changed and, you know, people were putting their chairs out days before. So there is a chair policy that is in effect. We're gonna, we, yeah, we're good. Everyone's doing their best and we're going to make it happen. And we're going to be great.
Yeah.
And what's our theme this year?
Return to glory.
Return to glory.
Oh, right.
All right.
And I had a question. A few years back, there were some young people that had made cookies that were wrapped in Saran Wrap that were sold. They were selling them up and down the route. Is that something that's allowed or is that not allowed?
Um, I think, I've seen.
I can answer that. Jamie, Jamie Clark is at the county if you're watching. That, those kinds of things are actually permitted through the county. So my recommendation would be to avoid food and selling of food unless it's prepackaged in a commercial kitchen. And the county's been pretty much cracking down.
Yep.
For good reason, for health and safety on those things. So hate to be the bearer of bad news, but.
I'd just like them to know beforehand.
Please don't sell food.
There's not supposed to be any selling of anything.
Okay.
So even if they did have all of their permits or whatever in place, I think for the parade, we're, we're having to do that, yeah.
And is there a limit to the number of floats?
No.
No. Okay.
I don't know what to expect this year. So I, yeah, we'll just want everybody to make sure to come. We have online registration. I'm hoping a lot of people realize that by showing up the day of. We've shortened the amount of time for that day of registration. We didn't want to take it away completely. Because I know a lot of people are traditionally used to just showing up. So we shortened it to, I think, just a couple of hours instead of the, in the past it was three hours. And we're just highly encouraging you to have online registration. So they'll make it a lot easier for us.
I think we also talked about potentially putting some education in the short term rentals. So people that don't live here would know that the chair policy, parade rules, you know, basic stuff like that. So.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
This is exciting. Oh, we have.
Oh, let's, Leila, can we give you the mic so we can get you? Yeah, thanks. Oh, we could borrow it, please.
That's okay.
Suggests, where, and that if you send out a list of specific jobs, I think you might get volunteers for the specific jobs.
And Caitlin, you had your hand up?
Hi. I like ding dong TV. Caitlin Wininger, thirty seven Portland. I have a trivia question. I was wondering if anybody can answer. When was the first flying horse parade in Mansonita? Nineteen forty six.
Wow.
I checked the art page on that. Nineteen forty six was the first parade. And, okay, so I got a little bit of an answer to my question from you, Erin. Thank you. I want to thank Erin and Brad and all the volunteers who's been working on this. It's so wonderful to have the parade back. Our first parade was in July of two thousand seventeen, because we just moved to Portland Avenue. And we lined up friends in front of our house because our street used to be closed off, blocked at each end to traffic. And only pedestrians could come down and people would bring their chairs over the night before. And I'd set them up in the morning and we had the parade. Yesterday I was surprised when I looked on the website and I saw the parade route and it had changed this year. And I wondered why it had changed. And my neighbor who has been there on Portland Avenue for forty years said, but it has always come up Portland Avenue for forty years. At least we don't know how much longer than that, but that's where it moved in. So we were just wondering why it had changed and if it was a mistake or.
I guess you could call it a mistake. Yeah, I guess I've never, I've never been like a helicopter view on what that route was. So it, you know, participating, watching it, I just had always been on like Mansonita Avenue or Portlandita. So, yeah, I just wanted, yeah, I don't know. My neighbor said something about it's that they always avoided the turn onto Mansonita Avenue off of Ocean because the motel is there and something about big floats couldn't make it around that corner. I don't know because I don't know any cars in Portland, but he said that was the reason. I'll probably call up Jerry Taylor on this and just kind of get his take on what, you know, why they did it that way. And if he goes on a very, I have a total colossal mess on his hands, then I hope that it's not too late to change that if it's.
Yeah. And somebody else told me it was a historical reason that, I don't know, somewhere around the nineteen hundreds or something, or whenever they started making streets out here, that Portland Avenue was like the only access highway, which was county road or something to the beach. Also historically it was a good street. I don't know. But whenever it's said that we're having a parade, that's most important. I do think it's important to let people know exactly how to volunteer. I have a friend in Pine Ridge who used to help with the rural school for living in Pasadena. Something that organized. And she said that she volunteered a year ago when Dan Hake put out a message for volunteers. And she doesn't know how to get involved. So.
Well, that's how I got involved is because I was also one of the people that were like, oh, let's start it together. Let's do it. And I was just part of an email thread and Dan kind of, yeah.
But, you know, yeah, there are people that are wanting to volunteer. So.
I think the city website might be the best place and.
We're probably for the visitor.
On the visitor's.
Have a thing where, I don't know, where it's like volunteer contact information and finding contacts.
And also people who want to participate with something in the parade, if you go west, west, well, just wants to march in the parade.
Oh, I would love that. Yes. You just, the website, you register online. Okay. And, yeah, or they show up the day of.
I wouldn't do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Caitlin.
And I think the website is visitmansanita.org.
Yes. And now somebody on Zoom, Dave Dillon.
Oh, Dave. Oh, yes.
Hi, the, the parade got moved over to come up Portland because the head of the parade was running into the tail of the parade and we all stalled. So that's why I extended it a couple more blocks so we could keep the parade moving. So that's why it extended a couple more blocks so we could keep the parade moving. And subsequently, that's when they, uh, uh, limited the number of cars. So that's the reason why it was moved to Portland from Mansanita Avenue.
But there's a long delay now.
Makes sense. I guess he thought we have another one, um, Lucy Brock. Brock, sorry.
Yes, uh, why don't you put it on BBQ and the Tillamook County Pioneer that you want volunteers? Lots of people read both of those.
That's a good idea.
I believe that we did back in February when we first started meeting, but I definitely will plug it again for sure.
That's it.
Okay, thanks Lucy. And I see a couple of hands. Uh, Joe, I think yours was up first.
Just a real quick one to Dave's point. Erin, didn't, didn't I also read something that you are, uh, limiting the number of cars this year? Um, we are limiting that, but it's, it's hard to say, uh, I don't, I don't know how to answer that right now. I think that we do have a limit of like thirty-five cars. But exceptions are made for people that show up and have like empty cars. We'll still let you go in even if it's over.
Well, I can tell you, having worked the parade for years, that, that, uh, by the time they get to Mansanita, there are huge gaps between. So, um, that, that's, it's not so much a problem anymore. And I don't know why, because we have more people, but there are huge gaps, which is.
Yeah, that's something that we need to control as well. We want to make it so nobody can stop for more than thirty seconds. But even for that, I can see how that eventually will.
It really is just amazing. If you have dancers that are going back and forth and they stop to it and everybody else keeps going. So if you can monitor that, that would be really helpful.
Yeah, definitely.
And then Isabel, do you want to come up to the microphone, please? Or is that okay? She can do it.
She can do it.
Traditionally, Calhoun Bible Church, everybody bakes and we don't sell it. We just put out in front of church refreshments, the coffee urn and the tea thing. Is that prohibited now? It's not selling. It's simply taking part.
Maybe we should ask.
Let's ask Ray looks.
Jamie Carter, man, we don't permit that stuff. So I just, I didn't ask.
I need to better ask for forgiveness. Right answer. We have another hand. Could you come to the microphone and? Well, you know, you gotta keep things moving. And please take your name and, and address.
Chuck Bridge. Uh, maybe contact.
Um, Dave Dillon could be able to answer that question. The letters is doing the color card stuff.
Also, uh, people who have veterans being. He will have a Jeep and a, uh, BMW vehicle for all the veterans.
Thank you. Don't you feel better? So we're looking for a motion to approve the permit for the parade.
So moved.
So moved and seconded, please?
Second.
Second. Thank you, Jenna. Um, Nancy, would you do roll call, please?
Yes, um, Jen.
Yes.
Linda.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Jenna.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Erin, thanks for all your hard work. I can't wait to see those planes go overhead. Thank you.
Uh, next I give a shout out if I can to Chuck, uh, for doing all the flags up and.
Yes.
Yes. You know, you've been doing that for years.
I don't know how things get done.
Um, next we have a liquor license application from McGregor's Whiskey Bar. Uh, we'll talk about this, um, on the council. Is there a presenter?
Jay. Thank you, Jay Vogel.
Jay Vogel.
Jager.
Is he on Zoom?
No.
Is he on Zoom?
You can approve it without him, but.
Yeah, there's like in the last week.
Um, so McGregor's Whiskey Bar has changed hands and when we have a new application with a new applicant, usually the police chief can sign off on renewals. Um, the governing body, which is you, is required to, um, buy the OLCC to approve their liquor license. Um, and then renewals are handled by the chief. So since it's changed ownership.
Um, the council doesn't have that much capability to make changes. It's pretty much kind of rudimentary, I think, is if I remember correctly, because there was one point where we wanted to change ours and it just wasn't in our purview to do that.
Yeah, our, our, yeah, we don't, we don't do that. So it's just, uh, it's kind of a pro forma.
Yeah.
You know, I have many concerns about the liquor license or the license fee. This would be the time by to address it. So you're also welcome to kick it to next month, but I do think they're trying to.
Oh, sure. If we can get it through. Um, is there, are there any public comments before we put this to vote? Don't see anything here. So any discussion amongst the council?
I'm just glad it's there.
Yeah, it's, it's a sweet little spot, isn't it?
It is.
Um.
So I, I just want to make sure is that Jay currently owns the lighthouse?
I'm not sure. I, I heard that, but I didn't know if it was true.
I don't know that picture either.
Yeah. Yeah, is that me correct? Is that true?
Okay.
I've heard this is licensed, so it's changed to him.
Okay. And so you're saying Eric signed off on it?
You sign off on it and Eric signs off on renewals. So the governing body approves new applications.
Okay.
And the chief approves.
Let me let you know when this takes effect.
Uh, I think it's immediately. Off the top of my head, sorry.
So, I mean, is he, um, is, is, he's the owner now? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep. He's currently selling off of his, um, I met with him. So he's currently selling off the, the previous owners. Okay, wants to change it over to his name.
Okay.
Is, is what he's doing. Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So do we have a motion to approve the license application from McGregor's?
So moved.
So moved. Second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you, Brad. Uh, Nancy, roll call?
Linda.
Yes.
Jerry.
Yes.
Jenna. Yes. Brad.
Yes.
Yep. Yes. Um, next is regarding, uh, ordinance twenty-three-one, repealing and replacing section fourteen of ordinance ninety-four-six relating to overnight camping in the city of Mansanita. And this, I believe, is the first reading. Um, Lila, you were going to walk us through this one. Is that?
Yeah, just so quickly. So the chief of police has walked city council through a number of work sessions. Um, this is to be compliance with state law in terms of how the city deals with overnight camping for houseless persons. Um, the ordinance has been reviewed and approved by the city attorney. Um, their last work session, city council recommended, um, or came to consensus to approve this. It was posted two weeks in advance and, um, uh, based on our rules. And so today, uh, the way ordinances work, just for folks that want to know, is that this is city council creating laws. So they have to read it twice in two open sessions. So this is the first one. We post it two weeks in advance to give the community time to review that. And then, um, we just ask that you read the ordinance by title and, um, recommend approval as a first reading and then we'll come back. If you do that next month, you'll have a second reading and then the ordinance, the ordinance goes into effect thirty days after, um, the second reading.
So I'm not certain if there's public discussion allowed on this. Um.
It's a decision, so you're welcome.
We are, we are voting. So is there any, um, discussion from the floor? Okay. Any discussion from the council?
No, it's pretty clear.
Okay. So, um, do we have a motion to approve the replacement repealment of section fourteen of ordinance ninety-four-six? Approval of the first reading?
Thank you.
Holding my breath on that one. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And Nancy, roll call, please?
Um, Jerry.
Yes.
Jenna.
Yes.
Brad.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
And Jeff.
Yes.
Okay.
May I ask, um, would it be possible to just skip the roll call, um, and just do the all in favor, all opposed? Um, my reasoning there is just that we have five people in council and two of us are already saying yes. And anything that's marked, that is, that is not unanimous will be marked from the minutes.
Well, the reason, um, I've, I've heard support for that change is that some people just listen to audio and just saying all in favor. Um, doesn't give a readout of who voted which way. So, um, I suppose we could, um. So, yeah, are you okay with the roll call tonight?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Um, uh, we did the ordinance. Um, Dan, I think is going to join us on Zoom. And he's going to walk us through a proposal for a stop sign on Cherry Street and High Street. Is that correct, Dan?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you for joining us.
Yeah. So every once in a while, we get a request, um, for stop signs. Um, usually it starts off with, hey, we want a four-way intersection stop sign, which we don't typically do. Um, but in this case, stop signs have to come before council. And so what we have here is a stop sign that was requested up on High and Cherry Street. I went up and looked. And it is essentially a somewhat of a T-intersection. Um, but then there's a crossroad that does go on to a private development. So looking at it, there are some view triangle issues coming off of High Street onto Cherry. So essentially looking at it, determining that that's kind of a safety hazard, that would be a good place to possibly put a stop sign. So the council can decide, you know, if you want to do something different or, you know, uh, not put a stop sign in there. And typically you'll see a lot of our streets don't have stop signs. But once again, it's a safety concern in this case. So there's really not much of a financial impact other than a stop sign, which costs us roughly about sixty dollars. We have a new post that was put in with new street signs on it. So that's already all in place. So all we need for it to move forward is essentially is a council motion to do so.
So I'd like to, uh, talk about that since I live, uh, one house away from there. And, uh, our street is a dead end street. There's, um, up until, um, the construction that started on our street a year and a half ago, uh, we probably had. I don't know, not very many cars, six cars or something come up and down the street. Um, now we have a lot of cars. And, um, when I look at the, I went down, of course I, I drive through there every day. Um, there's, I thi- I think there's a more, I think there's a better way to do it than putting a stop sign there. Um, nobody comes down High Street, uh, like period. They all come down, uh, you know, or college or at college. And, um, I would suggest that rather than putting a stop sign there, that I don't think is going to do really anybody any good. We kind of look at the whole, um, couple of blocks around there. Um, we don't have a dead end sign. We have a sign that says outlet, which to me means it's maybe one, several possible outlets. So we get a lot of people that drive down the street, especially in the summertime that don't realize it's a dead end. And they drive down, they turn around, drive back. And I mean, I've, I've counted like fifteen an hour or some days. So, uh, we don't have a dead end sign. We have a dead end sign that goes the other way. We have a stop sign on a roundabout that the stop sign is facing, it's a one-way roundabout and the stop sign is at the wrong end of the roundabout. Um, there's just a lot of little things down there that I think we can do to, uh, improve, uh, traffic flow in the area. One of the things is the, uh, thank God the houses are coming to an end, the construction. And so I think we're going to see a lot fewer cars from the construction. Um, but I think there's some other things that we could look at, Dan, may, you know, signage wise. I mean, we don't need a million signs down there.
Right.
Um, there's, there's some ideas, you know, that I have of even, uh, changing High Street into a one-way. Um, so that you would come down college and then go up High Street. Um, it, it wouldn't, would eliminate the need for that stop sign. It would, uh, make traffic flow there, I believe, better. So I would encourage us to, um, look at the couple of blocks in the area as a whole, rather than, um, a stop sign that I don't think is going to do anything. So that's my, my take on the area.
I like it.
Yeah, I've been up there too. And I, I didn't think about one way, but that makes.
Yeah, I mean.
I can really see that.
Literally nobody comes down.
I think it's worth a look in the whole area. That's a really good idea.
It is a good, it's a tricky area with those steep hills.
It's a tricky area and it's, um, it's, it gets really confusing. I mean, we have, um, motorhomes that drive down there. And, you know, and they have to step back all the way up. We have people that come down in trailers. I mean, it's just, there's just a lot of, um, there's a lot of things that I think we could do to make it easier and simpler. And again, you know, I don't, I don't care about the cost of the stop, stop sign. I just don't think it provides any, um, benefit to us as a neighborhood. So I'd encourage us to look at some other options. I don't know how you feel about that, Dan, but.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely look at some other options. Um, so I would suggest on that notion of, of essentially tabling this until a later council meeting and we, uh, we can come back with some, at least some information on some other options.
That sounds, that sounds good.
I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
Before we conclude this, is there any discussion from the floor? Yes. Thank you, Pat. And where do you live?
We're going to let you be able to live there.
Yes.
Yeah. You were saying nobody put this down on High Street. But, um, when that construction project is finished, there won't be all these contractors going to, and they don't even look to see if anybody's coming down High Street. So.
Were you okay with doing that?
Right. Yeah, but other people, mostly who don't live there or builders like they go, they go up college anyway.
Yeah.
The wrong way.
They go around.
You know, nobody can see. So then it's kind of the same way with coming up High Street. You have to actually stop to see if anybody's coming on now because they don't look either.
Right.
So at the very least, maybe there should be signs saying under controlled intersections.
You travel at your own risk, right?
I think looking at the neighborhood as a whole is going to be a. Rather than.
So it's going to make High Street one-way up. Nobody comes down anyway. Oh, and Dan, I've been trying to get him to put a one-way sign at the top of college. So when people come down there, they know it's one-way and maybe they wouldn't be trying to go back after.
So that's a whole study.
Sorry, Dan. So he said, there is a one-way sign. There is a one-way. So I think there should be a one-way sign at the top of that.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Pat. So that is a motion that we'll table for further discussion. Come back to it. Was there anyone else from public discussion? Okay. Um, Linda, you're going to walk us through a discussion on the contract proposal?
Uh, I'm going to walk you through a discussion of the committee selection process.
Oh, I've got that next, but, um, it's, that's fine. Whichever one you want to do first is up to you.
Oh, I'll do, let me do the contract first. I'm sorry, I had that backwards.
That's right.
Thank you. So I, I'm going to read a memo that will be sent to, uh, city council. I, I have been on council for a number of years and I've had the privilege of working with different city managers, actually four different city managers, all of whom have had their strengths and their weaknesses. I've also worked with three mayors, uh, some better prepared than others for a very difficult job. The city manager's role relies significantly on an effective strategic partnership between the city manager and council. During the past year, Miss Amman has worked with one council as they got to the brink of key decision points over a range of complex issues. And now there is a steep learning curve with a whole new council to process, understand and continue on the decision-making process. The new council just completed a three-sixty review, uh, of Leila Man. And the majority of the council rated her as exceeding expectations. On a scale of one to five, her rating was four. On a scale of one to five, her rating was 4.85 on characteristics such as elected body relationships, organization, community relationships, communication, and personal attributes. And the personal attributes had to do with ethics, trust, and high integrity. Our committee overwhelming, our community overwhelmingly supported our city manager with letters of support I've never seen before. And this is the first time I've ever seen this happen. Please note for the record, I have included samples of the community input, the council and staff evaluation in the packet with the approval of the city manager. Manzanita is at a critical point in growth driven by unanticipated development, expansion of the increased number of visitors all year long, our need for updating infrastructure, development of an updated doon management plan, or ordinance shepherding the Luba appeal, organizing and digitizing our outdated information system, and much, much more. This is accomplished and supported by our city manager, all while she leads the city operations, manages, mentors, and develops our outstanding, our outstanding staff. The body of work that falls under her management is staggering. Included in the body of work is planning for the future and expanding our funding options. We have had the luxury of excellent services provided while depending on funding from our visitors. 60% of the general fund, and that's pays for staff, it pays for police administration, is funded by TLT taxes from short-term rentals. Only 9% comes from, from property taxes. How do we continue to keep our community and village and a wonderful place to live and still fund the services that we've come to expect? Those services are driven by our desire to diversify funding initiated by our city manager and strongly supported by our council. The vision is to decrease dependence on short-term rentals. Along with funding comes planning for the future. For the first time in almost 30 years, Aman has initiated a complete review of our comprehensive plan, a process requiring a lot of community input and uh, and, and will influence and direct our future. For these reasons and more, I have two recommendations this evening. The first is an update to the city manager's contract. Currently, the update, are they, the update will remove a June 2024 date which would have required a vote of council to keep her a city manager. We'd like to keep her a city manager now for all kinds of reasons. Uh, an update of the ver, of the verbiage around a four-year total compensation review and a note that if a dispute occurs between the city and the city manager, each would pay their own attorney's fees. These have been, these changes have been reviewed by our legal counsel and supported. The contract is part of the information that are on packet on the website along with her performance review. Uh, I'd like to ask for discussion from the uh, council uh, questions about the city manager contract, and I would very much like a motion to accept the updated city manager contract.
Well, someone that um had probably what you call the steep learning curve. I've, I've, I've been on council about 120 days or something. And I've found Leila to be um super positive and optimistic, not only towards our city, but towards me. She's been super open to me and it's been easy for me to get the information that I've requested. So I appreciate that. You've provided me with access to city staff when I've had questions about things. I am impressed with your um tireless work ethic. I'm glad I don't have your job, quite frankly, but um.
It's a mental illness.
I, I, I'm kind of shocked at everything you had to do, and I think that kind of comes with the steep learning curve. So I appreciate all that. I found you to be very open to suggestions um that I've, that I've made. And um, I've seen, seen changes and I appreciate that. And uh, I believe you're a great asset to the city and I appreciate your hard work, so I would support those um those amendments as well.
I will second that, Brad. I will also say that the testimony from staff, everyone from staff at the city was high praise of Leila. It was, it was pretty impressive. Leila has done a great job mentoring and and encouraging our staff and, and asking hard things of our staff to do, and they will all stand by Leila. So, yes.
I also uh have been extremely uh pleased and impressed uh by Leila. I've worked with her now under two councils. In the last council, I was the new guy, the guy that was perceived to be at odds with the majority of council. Leila was extremely helpful to me uh in that position. I've come to trust her as a uh, a source of knowledge and expertise. She understands her role. She respects the division of labor between the council and the administration. Can't say enough about the, the job that she's done uh as city manager, and I think that she's been particularly challenged uh with this new council because, like Jenna alluded to earlier tonight, we have struggled as a body and Linda has pointed out that the relationship between the city manager and the city council is integral to the success of either the administration or the governing body. And uh, that relationship has not been ideal. And we are working uh hard behind the scenes. We've spent a lot of time in executive session. We've spent a lot of city attorney dollars trying to get things right.
Right.
And we will get them right. But uh, it's true at all. Leila has been a steady uh force moving projects forward. There's often misunderstanding in this town about who's in charge and who does what and who's responsible for what. Leila understands all of those and abides by them on a regular basis. She understands that she is here to implement the policy decisions that the governing body makes. And a governing body needs to do a better job than we've been doing since January. But Leila's job uh since January has been exemplary, and so I'm happy to support the changes.
Is there a salary increase?
That's next. So why don't we go ahead? If it's okay, have a motion to approve.
Have a motion to approve the change in the contract proposal. Is there any discussion from the public? Motion, so moved. Jenna, thank you. Second, Linda. Nancy, roll call.
Right. Jenna?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Okay, so given all of the comments that were just made, which I think is wonderful, I thank, I thank you all. The second motion has to do with an increase in compensation. I am going to make the motion to increase Ms. Aman's compensation by 3%. Her current compensation is 129,000 and is on par with Bay City. And Bay City is a lot less complex with a lot of less agenda items than is the city of Manzanita. She's well below Cannon Beach. Cannon Beach, who city manager earns 160,000 plus 12,000 for living expenses, plus car, which comes to close to 180,000. A 3% increase will bring Ms. Aman to 130,000 a year. And with the previously agreed upon for all of the staff, a 6% cost of living increase, it would bring her compensation to 140,000. There's been some talk about a bonus, and I think a bonus for a variety of reasons is really good in certain circumstances. It's really, in my mind, it's really tied to projects if, if Leila, 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 Leila's out there. Leila did it too. If Leila did a very good project on something that maybe was outside her scope, did it on time and under budget, then that would really be a bonus. This is for her body of work. It is for all of the things she's done. We would not be where we are today. We would not have the kinds of projects that we have today. We wouldn't have started our com, our comprehensive plan. We wouldn't have the amazing relationship that we have with the county, which you saw exhibited with Sarah Absher. We wouldn't be looking forward to the affordable, or the workforce housing that Leila brings such great experience to. And so for that reason, I really recommend a 3% increase in compensation. And I look forward to input from the council and any questions from the community.
Uh, the, the 140 is uh not in, not with the benefits in the package, is that correct?
That's base salary.
Okay, so what is the base salary plus the package total?
140. I don't know what the total compensation. I don't, I didn't add the, you're talking about benefits?
Right.
I did not add that.
Because it's, it seems to me like it's like 170 for something.
I don't have the answer to that.
Okay, so the 140 is the base?
Correct.
Without compensations?
It is the base compensation.
It's the, right, without, without benefits.
It's not the total compensation.
Okay, not the total. Thank you.
And in reviewing the salary for staff, uh, that was the base compensation as well. So it's, it's equivalent.
Salaries, and then just so people understand, staff get paid salaries, and then we also have medical benefits, dental benefits. That's what most good companies, and then we also participate in the public employee retirement system. So those are paid on behalf of the city for the employee, but base salary is like what we get to bring home.
Right, and it's, and it's what we reviewed for the staff in terms of the structured system.
Yeah. So was the 180 at Cannon Beach um plus the 12, was
That's base salary.
Same base, okay.
I tried to compare apples to apples.
And you said Bay City was 129?
Uh, no, 125. They're, they're actually currently looking uh, and their compensation they're offering is 125.
Okay.
And the Harlem is looking?
Yeah, and there's another one farther down the coast.
Okay.
Also looking.
I think we move over with this with 3%.
So do you make that motion?
I move that we sorry, I move that we increase Leila's compensation by 3%.
Do you respect that?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded to increase the base salary by 3% on the employment agreement.
Do you want a big public comment?
Oh, public comment. Yeah, before we vote.
Oh, yay.
Okay. All indicators saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed saying aye?
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Some, something else on?
Oh, yes.
Also, the last item on the agenda thing.
On this, which is certainly the last item on this. So oh, first of all, I just want to thank the community for your support.
I clarified this. We've done a roll call for everyone.
Well. I thought it was
Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
It was unanimous.
You want a roll call? We'll go back to the roll call.
All right. Brad?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
And the last thing, um Linda, is the appointment?
Yeah, so
Process?
Yeah, so um, this is the appointment process that keeps coming back to council, and so we had our legal counsel review it. And we had to make a couple of changes. What, what we had hoped to do is to have two counselors work on the uh, the selection committee to select a member of a committee and then bring it back to the mayor for final selection. We can't do that because if we have two counselors and we talk to the mayor, that's serial communication, so we can't do that. So we've changed that, so only one counselor on the committee. The second change we made is that there was a request by the mayor that we provide the full packet to any council member that wanted the full packet, so we're gonna do that.
It's applications.
And the applications will be on the website, too. And then the last thing is, we discovered in this last process that the budget committee had to be, you know, had to be appointed not by the mayor but by the city council. So we had to make that change in the process. So we reduced the committee to one city council member and the second member of the existing committee plus staff support. We provide a full packet to any council member who chooses to do that. The applications will be on the website. And the budget committee is selected by the full council. I'm hoping that this is the last change we'll make in this committee process. I think it's a great process. I think it's gonna work really well. And I think we've got it down so that it kind of dots all the i's and crosses all the t's.
Fine. Okay, um we will discuss this among the council. Anything to go there?
Uh, that right, Joe? Process looks good. Um should we discuss the planning commission after we?
Just after we?
Yes.
Yeah. And I will open the floor to any?
I'm done.
Uh, Joe, do you?
Well, I'll quit it, but um, I I'm Jonah Alas, I live in I'm just curious to know why all committees are not selected by majority of the council rather than just the budget may?
Uh, it's in our charter.
Charter?
That you can't do it?
No, the mayor, the mayor has final responsibility for uh, selection of committee members and follows the council rules. And so these are the council rules. And then the, the, so the selection committee will come up with a ranked set of candidates, and then the mayor can select from that. Good question.
Any final discussion from the council? Okay, so we will um, I think we need a vote, a motion to accept the uh, appointment commit, uh, process. Your motion?
So moved.
So moved and uh, seconded.
I will second that.
Thank you, Jenna. And roll call seems to be a popular thing here.
Deb?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Jenna?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes our agenda.
Well, there's one more thing we need to decide. Uh, we have the planning commission uh, appointment process coming up, and we have not selected a counselor to lead that. And I'd like to suggest, since Jenna's had experience on the planning commission, that she be the counselor that leads that process.
Yeah, no problem with that.
Okay. Uh, I will accept. Okay, thank you. If that's all right with the rest of the council?
Yes.
Okay.
I hope we do one somewhere down the line.
Oh, yeah.
Well, whenever somebody's term's up, I hope nobody is bailing early.
Yeah.
So we have, we have one member of the planning commission whose term is, or who resigned. I believe the term is up to 2025. I have an updated application, Nancy, that I will work with you to get that posted this week before the end of day Friday. That will mean that the application is open for planning commission. Deadline is three weeks after that. I've put the deadline down as May 26. We will conduct interviews um one day of the following week, and it will be hopefully determined at our June meeting.
Sounds good. We've got a lot coming up with the planning. We've got a lot coming up with the planning commission.
And then you elect also someone from the planning commission to work on the committee with you?
Lee Hiller Brandt.
Okay. Well, it'll be the two of you, and then
He's going to be great.
Your administrative support will come from Leila or?
Uh, Leila. Or, I'm going to do that one, probably Nancy. Okay.
Um, so that concludes the agenda. For the good of the order, is there anything, Jenna, you want to?
Did we want to do council updates? I saw that on the
That's the good of the order, I was told.
Well, we might want to talk about conversations. Yes. So conversations with counselors, many of you, I recognize your faces. Thank you for participating. I will just summarize this a bit. We will have a post going after the, a note from, from the counselors. Thank you all for your participation discussing the city hall. We thought that it was a great success, these conversations. Attendees felt heard, got answers, learned more about the process. Council walked away having better ideas and understanding from community perspectives, which will help all of us as we move forward with the city council or city hall decision. We liked the idea of having a dedicated topic. So we are gonna, we put a lot of work into that as well, so we are going to postpone, not postpone. We are going to start up our conversations with counselors again at the end of June. We have a pretty packed May with several budget meetings, work sessions, lots of stuff going on. And we just would like to have the time to prepare for our next conversation. That being said, please reach out with ideas, questions. We are here to listen. Our emails are posted on the website. This will also be posted to Facebook BBQ, so please talk to us. We're here.
Thank you. That's perfect.
Jerry, anything?
Well, as long as I've got the mic and the city council's already weighed in on this, I just remind everybody that the bond measure to support the health center is in your ballots. And your ballots are on your kitchen table, so please give it a very, very serious consideration. And if you have any questions, please feel free to talk to me, not as counselor, but as a board member of the Halem Bay Health Center and Pharmacy. Thank you.
Well, I, I just have to say, we had a conversation in the Mayor's Monday, and we actually got Trish on the line, and there, it's really interesting. There are some misunderstandings out there. So if you have a question, please reach out. This is really important to the region, and we want to make sure you have all the facts. So please reach out if you do have any questions. That would be really important.
Okay.
Thank you.
Russ?
I'm good.
One more.
The North Tillmack Library Friends Annual Book Sale is Memorial Day weekend, Friday, Saturday. Information is on the North Tillmack Library Friends website and our Facebook page for all of the information around it.
Thank you. And I'm going to remind people that the Mayor's Mondays, it wasn't on the calendar last week, so we had a quiet little intimate group. But we will be there next Monday, and then the following three will meet in the Wonder Garden, depending on the weather. I, I need to say that I'm disturbed by the, being in a community where people are singled out, where I have been told to stay away from dangerous people. There's a list. Where I am told to sever a friendship or even listening to someone. If someone writes a letter to the council, they have a right to be heard, not because of who that person is or what they say, but they have a right as a citizen. And I, I have to say, I spent a lot of years in classrooms, and a lot of that is pulling kids together. And I would never, never imagined I would be in an adult situation where I would be told who to befriend, or who to listen to, or who not to write an email to. And I think it's, it's something that the community really does need to look at closely. I mean, it's great when everybody gets along. It's great when everybody agrees, but that's not a democracy. And the democracy is that we have a right to say differing opinions. And if a person writes a letter and they follow the process and they request that it go into the counselor packet, it should go into the counselor packet. So I thank you all for showing up. I think we all have a lot to think about.
I'd like to make a comment because I think, I actually really agree with what you just said. I think this is a democracy, and I think it's really critical that everybody have access. I think also there's a point at which that access can lead to harassment and fear, and I'm not, I'm not really sure that that's something, I think we need to react to that. I think when, when a, when a person is targeted and criticized and focused on inappropriately, I think it's our job to stand up and say something. I, I do, however, agree. Please quit targeting Randy for this. I do agree that everyone needs to have that opportunity, and I, but I think there's a line that has to be drawn. And the, the last missive we got from Randy, I believe the line had to be drawn. So that's, I just, I just had to respond to that because I think, I think you're right. 99.9% of the time.
We elected you, Deb. We have faith in you. We elected you. Yes, I elected you for what you are, your your, your honesty, your you're easy to communicate with. I just trust you as a human being. You're a good person. And I'm concerned about this. Is this hacking involved? Hacking with emails going on?
No, no hacking.
Or if you want me to. It's a public record. It's easy to access. There's something, it's not, it's not human, it's not a step, it's not a public record. That doesn't matter.
No, it's not.
Not at all.
No, it's not. It's, it's, it's public record.
Record, that's how I, yeah, as public records. It's not letting it hurt. No. The hatred in this community is not letting it matter. It's serious. It hurts people.
Including our city, including our city manager.
All right, I'm, I'm going to take the opportunity. This discussion, I'm sure, will continue as we go forward. But I'm going to call the meeting to an end and adjourn. So thank you all for participating. We all appreciate your support just by you being here and talking with us and reaching out. It, it really means making a difficult job much easier. So thank you. Meeting is adjourned.